All right, today is Monday, June 14th, 2021, and I call to order our special city council meeting. City clerk, can we have a roll call? Here. Here.
Here.
First, we will stand for the invocation, and then a prayer. Ms. Byron, dear Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for bringing us all here together safely tonight. I pray that you will guide each of us as we look at the needs of our city. I am thankful for all the people with all their input, making our priorities a real item. And I pray they'll discuss wisdom tonight and use this name, Amen. All right, salute to the American flag, ready, begin. Okay, at this time, we will have public comment. Anyone who chooses to speak, they can pull out a speaker slip, or possibly add ecomments, or anyone joining us by Zoom. So first, we will start with ecomments. Do we have any ecomments? No ecomments, okay. And then, is there anyone on the Zoom line that would like to speak?
Does anyone on the Zoom line? Time to raise your hand.
Okay, and so far, I have Suzanne Cosma for public comment. So you have, you can come up to the mic, and you'll have three minutes. You can take it down, so we can hear you, that's fine.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name is Suzanne Cosma, and I'm a member of the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee. I'm here to support the continued use of all Measure U funds for the enhancement of public safety, police, and fire, and I ask the council to consider doing the same. Personally, I believe some of the Measure U funds could be used for additional code compliance officers and some public works employees who could work in hand with police and fire. Funds could even be used for graffiti removal and other cleanup programs to enhance the city of public safety, if it's not being done already. As an appointed oversight committee member, I believe it is my duty and responsibility to follow the provisions of city resolutions 4703, 4731, and ordinance 1918, until and unless those resolutions are modified or rescinded. Also, the number one concern, the majority of the citizens I speak to, is crime or fear of crime in the city, and we want our visitors and citizens to feel safe. The police department is diligently trying to hire additional police officers, but it's very competitive. Essentially, all departments are recruiting from the same candidate pool, but the city does need additional boots in the street. And secondly, I would like to commend the mayor and the city council for discussing strategic strategies and priorities. I would like to further commend you for seeking public input. The strategy of rebuilding, refocusing, and reimagining a future for the city of Hemet after the pandemic is paramount, and it won't that happen overnight, but this will take community outreach and involvement. These strategies will help to develop a strategic plan for the city, both short-term and long-term, and pave the way for city progress. To paraphrase a line from Alice in Wonderland, "If you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there." This plan will provide clear direction and establish measurable goals. Lastly, I would like to suggest the city use some of the funds they received from the federal emergency rescue plan to address some of the quality of life issues that we all discussed the last few years. Again, thank you for your time and the forward to seeing the council's great on community goals and strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment? First, we will start with item 6A. Start with the proposed strategic plan for the city of Hemet.
Good afternoon, all mayor and council. Can we have IT share the screen up on the Zoom so that residents that are on the call can see the presentation, please? Okay, while they're queuing that, I'll go ahead and start with some of the background. As a result of some of the conversations that were held earlier this year, the council initiated some of these conversations back in January of this year, on January 29th, to be exact. On that date, the council met fittingly in this same room, similar to this layout. Mayor and council held a special meeting to discuss the priorities for the city. Subsequent to that, the council held a follow-up discussion on February 26th, 2021, to finalize the goals for the city. During that same time, the city manager's office took the lead in planning for the fiscal year 2122 budget, which is a program-based budget, which is obviously included in the backup. In addition to that, towards the end of May, the council did host a session just outside of the doors here, where the council heard feedback from the community, and the council hosted a little bit of activity for members of the public to provide commentary on the overarching priority goals discussed by the council, and had an opportunity to get feedback from members of the community. Based on those overarching priority goals, they included quality of life, economic opportunity, partnering and collaboration, community engagement, and then the last, home organizational effectiveness. So when the community came together and provided feedback, the context of their feedback was really around these priority goals that were discussed by the mayor and council. On that evening, I can't read that from here, but the community aligned much of the conversation around some key themes, and they identified key action items that they felt were important to move the city of Hemet forward. Many of these items were similar to what the council had talked about previously, so there was very much alignment when it came to discussions that were held by the council as well as the feedback from the community. Some of those key takeaways included homelessness, community cleanups, code compliance efforts, parks, continued engagement with the community or community engagement, and then finally, infrastructure, including roadways, city facilities, and business systems that were at the core of the internal side of the organization. So within tonight's backup, the document itself has some key elements to it. Those include the vision, which the council did discuss earlier this year. It includes a mission statement, it includes values, and then finally, it talks about priority goals. I've really hit on a few items that the council, obviously, has been talking about the last few months. So within those priority goals, as I mentioned, our quality of life was summarized as to ensure that Hemet is a safe, clean, attractive, and comfortable for all those who live to work and live and visit the community. An economic opportunity summarized as to ensure that Hemet is a hub with access to quality jobs, shopping options in a varied and sustained tax space, community engagement, to connect and participate in a constant dialogue between members of the community, city staff, and elected officials to promote togetherness and positivity, partnership and collaboration to pursue partnerships that will increase the opportunities available to the community, including our businesses, unemployed, and youth populations, and finally, organizational effectiveness to identify the work inside the city organizations that effectively provide services to the community and ensure financial stability. Based on those priority goals, staff undertook a parallel track. And so with the establishment of the strategic plan, the draft strategic plan, at the same time and concurrently, the staff is working on the budget. And so this item is the next item, but this year's budget process began with a running start based on the council discussions that were held in January and February of this year, as well as the final community gathering input discussion that was held in May. So program-based budgeting allows for budget information to be gathered around the city's programs and services. The budget, as shown in the next item, will show the cost of a specific program and a method to evaluate the program's effectiveness and outputs through performance metrics. The budget is organized in a manner that we think provides more transparency, better than, I believe, at the departmental level, which we believe provides a clearer and more transparent picture of how much money is being spent on each program delivered to our community. One thing that I should add to, because there is a significant amount of alignment that goes between the strategic plan that is in the backup staff report as well as the budget. So you'll notice that the objectives and the goals that are identified within the strategic plan are the same ones that are identified in the budget. So there is very much alignment, there is very much an allocation of funding that is tied to the strategic plan. And so it was very difficult to talk about the strategic plan without also talking about the budget. And then similarly, it's very difficult to talk about the budget without looking at how it reflects in the strategic plan. So there is alignment that was very much intended to be reflected in both of the documents. So mayor, that concludes the presentation that I have as the opening for the strategic plan. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have based on what's included in the backup.
All right, thank you. You guys have done an incredible job on this. I mean, I feel like we put together our whiteboards, and you made it beautiful. So the way that you collected the information was great. Does anyone have any comments?
Just a comment. Yeah, thank you, staff, job well done on the new format and prioritizing everything that the council talked about and that the public talked about. Are you going to go through any of the details other than what you've gone through so far? Because I think, unless everybody has a copy of it, just the little brochure, whatever, the 15 majors, if you could just go through those, if that's okay with you? Because it's so well done. I'm really impressed. 10 years on council, finally got a document up and saying, this is really good. This is very, very good. So if you go through that, I would be good.
Sure, thank you, mayor. I too like to commend all the staff for the work in this. It's a very user-friendly document, and I think you've done an outstanding job marrying up the council priorities and those of the community from the town hall that we did. I'm pleased to see that, as we go through it, I have just a couple of comments and questions, and maybe a couple of suggestions on some of the either action items or success indicators.
One more thing, too, city manager, just to relay some feedback I heard from the public. The way that the strategic plan was laid out in this document online, and with the budget alongside, there were some citizens that were very impressed. I got different feedback from different people, and the one comment was, you know, it's so transparent, I don't think we ever given out this much information. And then the readability, it was very easy to understand, and then tie the priorities with the budget and the strategic plan, so I was wondering that out.
Mayor, if there's any other comments, happy to take them.
When he had, and maybe if you're going to go one page at a time, then if you want us to comment somewhere, is that fine?
So the first page, I'll call it the context or the content of the strategic plan, provides a little bit of the background on the city of Hemet. Talks about population area and location, miles of street in the community, streetlights. I believe it is being shown on the PowerPoint here. Miles of water mains, active water accounts in the community, and then also some more details associated with the water system. We felt that this was appropriate to just provide a foundation to the community about the things that make our community unique and different from other communities that are out there. 70 sworn police personnel, 49 sworn fire personnel, 12 city parks. And I know Kathy is pretty proud about this, over 145,000 library card folders here, and, you know, that utilize or have some sort of connection to this library. The next page talks about a little bit of the background with respect to what started all of this. I can give, and I should give a lot of credit to the council over the last few years. The city's taken aggressive steps to remove scrutiny from the state auditor. The Hemet City Council has developed and provided the vision on the overall direction of the city, and has taken significant strides in addressing the following: the ongoing budget deficit, the high staff turnover issue, a lack of clear shared values and vision for the future of the community, delayed capital infrastructure improvements, and then finally, community engagement. Just the mere fact of the council desiring to have these types of workshops to talk with the council, I think, or to talk with the community, is a testament to the seriousness this council's taken in addressing some of the concerns that have been conveyed over the last few years. Again, just provided some background on how this process unfolded, the various steps that the council took, and then the items that are included within the document, which I mentioned, the vision, mission statement, community values, priority goals, success metrics, and indicators, and then finally, action items for the upcoming fiscal year. So I think this next page that I have on here, page 7 of the document, includes the vision of the city. The city of Hemet shall be a model of excellence in local government, a safe, well-planned community with equal opportunity for all. And I know that the council very much tailored that based on the input that was held earlier this year. The mission statement, the city of Hemet will be a destination of opportunity and empowerment for its residents, businesses, and visitors by capitalizing opportunity, striving for growth and promoting diversity and respect for each member of our community. After that, we get into the values. We believe in an open, honest, and representative form of democracy. We are dedicated to the highest ideals of honor and integrity. In order to merit the respect, trust, and confidence of the citizens of Hemet, we believe our primary responsibility is to those who live, work, visit, or otherwise come in contact with our city. We are committed to enhancing the quality of life by providing exemplary services. And finally, we believe that the employees of the city are an important resource, and through them, our mission and vision will be accomplished. We will support them with dignity, respect, and fairness. The goals, which provide more detail in subsequent pages, are summarized in the infographic that is shown there. Then includes quality of life, economic opportunity, community engagement, partnership and collaboration, and then finally, organizational effectiveness. So the next section of the strategic plan talks about the specific objectives, the action items with respect to each priority goal that the council identified with input from the community. The key objectives within the quality of life goal include: enhance the visual appearance of the community to make it attractive and reduce light, to create and explore homelessness solutions for the city of Hemet, and then finally, increase public safety visibility and response. Within that, the action items that were included within have been incorporated within the budget. So again, the alignment is key there. And so in the instances, for instance, the number one item, increase rocks enhancement to seven days a week. The appropriate funding has been included to ensure that we have that program so that it can operate seven days a week. We have included neighborhood cleanups and other details associated with the items that the council and the community talked about previously. In addition to that, we have included some success indicators that give an indication as to how well the city is performing when it comes to some of those items. I mentioned in the staff report that some of these success indicators are from, you know, worldwide accepted benchmarks through ICMA. And so we've included some of those within the documents that the council gets an idea of whether we're actually moving the needle a little. And so that's been the change that has been going on for about the last eight or nine months with the staff. And so that's why it was really easy to incorporate those into the strategic plan itself. On economic opportunity.
Excuse me, city manager, I do have just a couple of comments and a question on this page before we go on.
Sure.
It may just be a typo under the success indicators. If you go down to the sixth bullet, it just says average time between. I think that maybe was a carryover from the bullet above it. So I don't think you were, unless you were planning on putting something else in there.
Yeah, that should be fixed. We'll take care of that one.
Okay. And just a suggestion, the very last bullet, we talk about the number of traffic accidents involving fatalities. I personally would be more comfortable using the term collisions rather than accidents because there really are very, very few accidents. Most of them are collisions that have some causal factor. And so I know it's more semantics, but I think collision would be a better term there. And I would advocate that we would probably want to track injury and fatality collisions, because I think those are, but for the luck of the occupant, any serious injury could have been a fatality. And I think those are ones that we really want to try to mitigate through traffic enforcement.
Okay, so since you put this all together, is everybody good with that? Collisions instead of accidents? Yeah, just do a quick consensus, okay? Yes, exactly. All right, awesome. Do you have any along that page, Chris?
Just another suggestion, and I'll defer to the police chief's preference on this, but I think one of the things that could be a good success indicator, and it would impact, it would be reflected through what we're calling boots on the ground, number of personnel, and the effectiveness of our prime prevention efforts. And that is the percentage of time that patrol officers would have prevented preventative patrol time. So in other words, their calls for service demand, if they're going call to call to call, they don't really have much time for officer-initiated activities and preventative things that they could be doing to address quality of life and drive prevention. So just a suggestion that some success indicator might be monitoring the preventative patrol time.
If I could provide a little bit of context, one of the things that really drove the items that were included here in terms of the success indicators and the metrics was we wanted to start somewhere, and so we felt that it was, from the staff perspective, that it made sense to start with some of the ICMA globally recognized benchmarks so that we could have something where we could start from. Because obviously, as you know, council member, we can, you know, measure a lot of things. We really wanted to start off with the ICMA one, so that's why you'll see some of the language that was included there, because we wanted to start, you know, from a baseline or a foundation. So that's why these items are included here.
And I'm not hung up on that. I understand the value and importance of having some comparative analysis with other jurisdictions, so. That's fine.
Can we talk about how everything will be measured and reported?
So the next step that we have here is we're looking at having an online module where these specific items can be viewed by members of the public, can be viewed by the community, and in online and interactive manner. So that's what we're looking at now. We've been talking to a vendor for about the last three months on that. We've got a proposal to do that, and so that's what our intent is, to have that online so that members of the public can see these specific items, and then, you know, get an idea of what those are on a local basis. Okay, and I apologize, I'm making notes on PDF documents, so for people that can see my notes, apologize for that. Economic opportunity. The two main objectives here include developing business practices that welcome new development by streamlining processes. And then secondly, provide resources to help new businesses to enhance the customer service experience. There's a number of items that we're looking at right now under each piece leadership. Let's see him here, but there's a number of ideas that he's been reviewing in order to help streamline different processes. And so that's really where some of these items are included within the document to really make the experience a lot better for the business community and applicants that are coming through our systems. There is a little bit of a similarity to the organizational effectiveness, but again, you can't really have one without the other. A few of these items include developing one-stop permitting system by using technology, maximizing the use of virtual inspections to minimize delays of the public. That's really been a really good benefit as a result of COVID. We've been able to do online virtual inspections without having our team have to go out and physically drive to a location. And so we're really looking at how we can expand that well into the future to get more work done without having to have downtime when they're driving from place to place. And additionally, staff is currently going through applications to provide $320,000 to CDBG, small business grant. So again, excuse me, all these things mirror what we've been talking about. There is an allocation, there are an action item to have service hours from Monday through Friday, thanks to the leadership of the council. There were changes in the MOUs bargaining agreements that did allow for the changing of work schedules that allow for that. So quite a bit of planning that I want to, along with that, knowing that this was where we wanted to end up. So those are just some of the action items that were included in that specific item.
Any questions on this page? Right, let's go.
Okay, moving on to the community engagement side of things. I can respect and appreciate that this council in particular is very in tune with members of the community, and I'd say is more on the cutting edge and the progressive side of engaging with members of the community. So the key objectives for this specific item include: increase public transparency for the public, increase the community's pride within the city, and then deliver messaging to the community that connects, is consistent, and relevant. A part of what we've been doing includes monthly updates to the council regarding secret bits. We'd like to include that to members of the public so that they can see what's going on across the community. Again, we've been providing video updates to the community that we've been sharing with the council. We'd like to continue moving those forward and engaging the community additionally through different media sources. There are some things that we'd like to begin that include developing bimonthly community meetings with the community. So in that, that might entail going from district to district, talking to members of the community alongside members of the council. If there's a desire in a particular area of the community where we'd like to hear about police updates or fire updates or community development updates, we bring along the appropriate staff to connect and engage with members of the community. Chief Pus, let's see him here. But he's included some items to ensure that his team is engaging with the community. Regular coffee with a cop meetings and expanding some of those items to help create synergies between staff on the policing side, all those members of the community. And so those are some of the key action items that have been included within the community engagement priority goals. I will add one other thing. We did pilot a program earlier this year where we partnered with the school district to highlight some notable alumni throughout the community. I believe this was something that council member Kuput was involved previously. And we were able to roll out the first batch of banners earlier this year and had some really good feedbacks. And we'd like to continue putting that forward and partnering with the school district to ensure that we are highlighting students and members of the community on a global basis.
All right, any questions on community engagement? Comments? All right.
On the partnering and collaboration priority goal, some of these key objectives include to develop concepts and programs, increase opportunities for youth recreation, to develop concepts and programs, enhance quality of life services, and then finally to develop programs to offer support to the communities, businesses. One thing, and I know that I was communicating with the mayor over the weekend. We've got Brubaker Park baseball field that's come up previously. We'd like to identify and operate the process to ensure that we're maximizing the use of those fields and maximizing the opportunities for you to use our facilities to, play organized sports in the community. We've got in there to continue the process for the state park. We'd like to provide additional activity with respect to the fire escorts program. I know that with COVID, we had to put a pause on some of these items, but I know that conversations with Chief Phillips and other members of the fire department, that is a priority to make sure that we've got the opportunity to connect with the youth and provide hopefully a pipeline for those folks to get into the fire department or the public safety. Something that was talked about earlier this year, I think by Mayor Proten, was the adopter street program. We developed some very preliminary draft parameters for that program that we'd like to bring back to the council and have it, have the council formally adopt those items in the future. And again, this is really a focus in on connecting with the community, making sure that we're providing information with the community and connecting with the community. We do have a pretty unique community in that there's such a desire to want to help and partner and work with the city that we're really fortunate to have these types of people in our community that want to do this work. And I know that all members of the council are engaging with members of the community when it comes to that. So we just wanted to solidify that and the strategic plan. Those were the key highlights within that specific item there.
All right, do you have any comments from this page? This is great because we just feel like our partnering and collaboration, that's what it takes to run a city. And if we walk out and be part of the community, then it no longer is a community. So I love to see this. Thank you.
Okay, and then the the last component, last priority goal here has a lot of substance here. And this is really where the meat and potatoes are for a lot of the staff on our inside. Key objectives for the organizational effectiveness priority goal include to operate in a financially sustainable manner, to evaluate practices, to ensure continuity with industry best practices, provide council with policies that help provide consistency and less liabilities, to increase employee retention by training and creating a positive workplace, and then finally streamline fire prevention coordination efforts. One of the key themes, I think this is the third budget that I've been involved with. One of the key themes from just my perspective is providing a balanced budget that does not utilize a one-time revenues to balance the budget. You will note that we do have a number of one-time revenue expenses in this budget, but I will not program ongoing obligations using one-time revenues because that just becomes, you know, a one-time funding source and at some point that funding will disappear. We have and we'll continue to evaluate staffing levels in the administration office. We do, we are currently underway with a user case study. We anticipate having that done hopefully in the next few months. And we plan on bringing the results of that study to council. Really important on this item is the fact that the council should have an understanding of what items are being subsidized. There may be some policy goals that the council is looking to accomplish by subsidizing some services provided to the community. But there are others where it may make more sense for the council to do full cost recovery when it comes to some items. Obviously, this impacts our ability to fund some of the programs that we have here. And so it's very much a policy level discussion that we plan on bringing to the council. Again, work towards removing the city from the state auditor watch list, maintaining the city's 20% reserve. One of the key items that the council talked about earlier this year is a grant rider. You'll see that in the budget, we have created a grant program. We're April, we are aiming to centralize grant services or grants, the grant program centrally in the city manager's office so that we can move towards that direction where when we do bring around a grant rider, that we're able to go to one person to manage it, oversee it, and be the conduit for other items across the board, across the agency. There are some items that the council talked about, evaluating the code enforcement process, which our code compliance process, we're currently underway with the attorney's office and community development. I believe they've got a meeting tomorrow to follow up on some items. And so some of the items that we've been talking about over the last few months are really embedded here. You will know that we've got items including creating a sidewalk repair program, creating public works maintenance schedules in line with existing staffing, and then really getting down to what I call kind of fundamental management, particularly in public works. So getting them, we're getting the team on board with scheduling, getting them on board with knowing that if it's, you know, the holidays, if it's Christmas time, that, you know, Christmas decorations got to go up. We've got to do those types of things that are, you know, Christmas may come as a surprise because of how fast it comes, but it shouldn't be a surprise when it comes to it happening in December. So really having the team operate and do their work in a more planned and thought out manner. And so I think those are the key items in there. I should add that, because this one just stood out to me, the council did talk about a section 150 trust and council did provide directions. So we plan on bringing forward policy solutions. And then your turn to talk about some of those items that the council has already discussed preliminarily. And just closing out the loop on those items so that we can get those off the list of things that we need to take care of. So that's the last priority goal, Mayor, after you're answering questions on that one. Some of the other ones that we talked about here.
All right, excellent. I think this looks great. I don't think it's our intention to speed through this and approve this tonight. We have them listed on here as action discussion items. And so obviously, we can if we want to, but I recommend you just take this all in and read over it again. And we'll discuss it again at the next meeting. If that's fine. Is that, is that good with all of you? And the same with the budget. I mean, we're going to go, this is our first bullet and, but it's just a tiny, it's a lot. This is a lot to process, but this is great. So thank you very much. All right, next we'll go on to item 6B presentation. Oh yes, hold on, Russ has one more.
Yeah, overall, I'm just very appreciative of the effort that's reflected in these, in this document. Because one of the things that government gets accused of many times is inefficiencies. And what I see depicted in here is a movement more in line with the private sector where employees are acknowledged for their work and they're appreciated and there's interactive, particularly like paid with performance. All of those kinds of things are bringing us more in line with the public, with the private sector. And, and that's what I've been hearing for many, many years, that government moves too slow and, and it's too, it, it just lacks motivation. It just kind of gets stuck in a process of this is how we do it. And, and I think keeping things more in line with the success models that we've seen in the private sector is the way we need to be moving. So I'm happy to see that because it's all throughout this stuff.
I agree with Russ on that. And also it's at the point where, you know, we, in the past, we've had a half a page or three quarters of a page or whatever in the budget document itself with the goals of each department and the overall arching goals of the city. But we've never had a succinct 13 pages of what we basically are the vision, the mission statement, where we are, where we want to go, and have measurable outcomes. So having, having it in a smaller, more manageable form, but also something that printed or having on the website individually, separate from everything else. It's, this is us and this is what we're doing. This is our goal and this is how we're going to get there. So the document, it, it's really well done. I'm really glad we've done this process. Come on. Yeah, it's good. Very good. All right, if there's no further comments, we can go on to item 6B, and that is go on to the proposed budget.
Thank you, Mayor. So if IT can queue up the budget presentation. And then if we could just share it for the folks on Zoom too. So before we get started on this one, I'll just provide a little bit of background on how this will get folded out tonight. We do have members of the executive team that are here tonight. We've got some that are physically here, but then we also have some that are on Zoom. And so what we'll do is we've like lined up a series of three presentations from all the departments and the divisions where they'll have an opportunity to just briefly talk about, you know, their proposed budget, new enhancements that are included there, and notable items that we can talk about. But this isn't intended to do a deep dive into the departments. A lot of that content is within the budget itself. We really wanted to provide an overview from the departmental and the divisional level about this fiscal year 21, 22 budget. So with that being said, I'll just provide a few slides of background of how we got here and then turn it over to the members of the staff who really took the lead and taken care of this so that they can provide the context of what it means for their operations. So I first want to acknowledge that this was a new process. Obviously, the layout is completely different than what we've done before. It has a different feel, it has a different flavor to it, and it's clearly a deviation from previous year's budgets. I mentioned this in the strategic plan conversation, but there was clearly alignment that's going on between the budget as well as the strategic plan. And then I think the most important part of this is really acknowledging the staff. So if we could have the key members of the finance team that were involved with this, Lorena, Kalina, Tiffany, if we could have them just stand up for a second so everybody can understand who and get to know who they are. These are really a little bit Erica, I think I saw Erica on Zoom, Erica is a lot our community. These are really the individuals that brought this all together. I can't thank them enough. I know that they were here very late on Thursday night. I know that there was a series of emails that were going back and forth until this was wrapped up. So I can't thank the finance team under Lorena's leadership for everything that you've done to get us to this point. I really do appreciate everything you've done. So thank you. So as I mentioned, this year's budget process began earlier this year based on the conversations that were held by council in January and February of this year. This is a program-based budget. So the, the way that this budget is, is gathered and centralized around is really around the city's programs and the services that are provided to the community. So the budget does show the costs of a specific program as well as a method to evaluate the program's effectiveness and outputs through performance metrics. Again, to tie back to the strategic plan. The reasoning for this was to provide information to the community at this level versus the departmental level so that we could provide a clearer and more transparent picture of how much money is being spent on each program delivered by members of our community. And so that's why you'll see in certain operations, you know, for instance, in the police department, they'll have the K-9 program. And the fire department, they'll have fire prevention. And the finance department, they'll have accounting, they'll have payroll. And so we really wanted to provide the community and the council the opportunity to get an idea of how much money is invested in each one of those programs. So we've talked about some of these items over the last few months. Some of the fiscal year 21, 22 budget highlights include a rocks seven-day-a-week coverage that I'm sure Chief Pus will talk about in his presentation. This does not have this, there are no reductions in this budget to align with the rock seven-day-a-week coverage. We have added about 20 part-time personnel to assist with seven-day-a-week coverage to take care of some of the items that I know Suzanne mentioned, the feeding removal, some of the blight eradication efforts that I'm sure she'll get some more detail about tomorrow at Measure U ME. We've included funding for four community cleanups, and this was a change based on, I think it was two council meetings ago where the council requested that have the proposed two cleanups. So we've included the funding for that in the budget. There are increases for impacted bargaining groups, including SCU, HMMA, as well as HFFA. We have included one additional FTE in the parks function that I'm sure Lynn will talk about in his presentation. We have created a new program in community development, which is identified as the housing program, which will centralize some of the efforts related to housing, which was primarily handled out of the finance department. So that is a solution to help alleviate and place that function in the department that it should belong in. But we have included the upstaffing of station five to a four-engine. We have included funding for city employee recognition events. That was something that came out of the council discussions previously. We have included an allocation of overtime for medics squad one at Station One. We have included the funding for an HR analyst position to primarily deal with police and fire. Over the last few years, with the addition of Measure U, we found that whether it's the number of recruitment, whether it's benefits, whether it's fill in the blank, I know that with the upstaffing of Station Five, there will be significant amounts of work required from HR to go through promotional examinations. I know that we've got a number of job descriptions that have changed. And the police department in that all requires time from HR to allocate their time. So we have included the funding of a position to help alleviate some of that workload in HR. And then finally, there is a new format that has been included in the budget, which is included, obviously, in backup. I believe it was on May 25th. I did talk to the council about follow-up items that were not included in the proposed fiscal year 2122 budget. Some of these have not been included. Some of these include some components that have been included. But I just want to provide, I just wanted to provide some follow-up on some of the items that were discussed. We reached out to different groups at the Homelessness Outreach. We've gotten two proposals to provide homelessness outreach, coordination, centralization, to help with getting folks housed, providing different sorts of mechanisms for them to travel to their home. And we've got some preliminary estimates of about $300,000 to $400,000, depending on the level of homeless services that the city council is looking for. So that's a rough ballpark estimate of what that cost would be. Two different vendors did provide us information on that, and that's the range that they're at. The sidewalk repair program, we did talk about that. We've got elements of the preliminary steps of the program that I'm sure Lynn will talk about. She has a chance to talk about this. But we really think that there's some key opportunities when it comes to the American Rescue Plan funds that are programmed for the city of Hennepin that could help, that could be utilized to fund some of these programs on a go-forward basis. I did have a chance to follow up with IT. We reached out to a vendor that previously did a study on what the estimated cost would be. Based on the age of that report, it seems that we need to update that report to get a better idea as to what the actual cost would be, because in the time that the initial report was provided, the technology has changed, and so that may change the cost of that that's needed for this system. We did, I did ask for information or direction on a PR communications firm for the city. One of the things that we did include in the strategic plan is the creation of a community engagement plan. We believe that the PR communications firm would be a segment for a portion of the larger community engagement plan. And so as we start developing that plan, and start identifying the key elements of that individual or that group might be involved with, we think that might be the best time to bring that forward. We do have some funding that we've allocated that could be used to help kickstart some of that work. And that is included in the fiscal year 2122 budget. We're refined of cannabis services. There isn't anything that I need direction on tonight. But as we start and legal starts bringing forward the specific parameters of that program, that's really when we'll probably start asking council to allocate additional funding to this specific area. But it's too premature for us to provide a dollar amount. We have included a dollar amount there for some of the preliminary work that's been done so far. But in terms of what the specific particular level of funding would be for that, it's too soon for us to provide that information. And so we're not asking for any sort of action or any sort of approval on a dollar amount there at this moment. So with that being said, we'll get into the meat and potatoes of the departments and the divisions of the city operations. And so the first department is the city council function. That is primarily summarized or included by just the administration program, and there are no new expenses included here. You'll note that obviously, this is where expenses for leading California cities, whether it's meetings, whether it's planning Sacramento, this is where this program is funded from, or those activities are funded from. And so there are no reductions, and there are no new expenses here. And so this is pretty much status quo for the proposed fiscal year 2122 budget for as a council office. When we look at the funding sources, this is the the way that you'll see the rest of the operations program. You'll see the bulk of the different funding sources that fund the council office or the council function, and you'll see that it's all funded out of the general fund. There is no measure U, there are no special revenue funds that go into funding this operation. So when we get into some of the other operations, we'll see the different funding sources that make up that specific program, so that the council and the community can get an idea of how some of these operations are funded in the city.
Yes. On the, for the city council now, that looks like compared to what was adopted this year, it is $50,000 less. Because this current fiscal year has 198, unless we that would be on page, let me see, 51 or 300?
Yeah, I don't recall any notable reductions off the top of my head. Lorena? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our three-year's budget included a portion of the executive analysts that was charged to the city council department, and in next year's budget, it's all under the city manager's budget.
Okay, so then my question would be, get to my other page. There's like $30,000 of internal service fees, so I was assuming that that was for that. And maybe, oh, $40,900 for internal service charges for the city council. So I was thinking that that was for the analysts or the somebody?
No, the way that previously was the percentage or a portion of the executive analyst's salary was tied to the council office, and I think the reasoning was based on newsletter, based on some of the things that would help educate the community in terms of that position just being tied to the council office. But in this fiscal year, that cost has been programmed specifically only in the city manager's office.
Okay, so then that leads to this question. What is the internal service charges of $40,900?
I will have everything off the top of my head, because I don't want the budget in front of me, but it would be costs like the maintenance of the surface posts or any iPads that are provided to council, and then like
We better just, we better just hop there. Whoa, whoa, whoa. You find those answers, show me. Because I don't want to laugh out loud. Okay. Okay, we better move on.
Okay, so the next office is the city manager's office. In this department, you'll see that we've got three programs. The admin program, the community engagement program, as well as the grants administration program. So the new expenses for this program include, obviously, the grants program, which is was moved from the finance department, and so now CDBG, if there's any other sort of grants, services that are requested from other departments, that would be the sole, kind of the centralized person that would help navigate other departments, ensuring that if there are needs for that, that it's being centralized, and it's being coordinated through the city manager's office, that we know what's going on. We think this will provide a better level of reporting to the council, and if there is a grand writer that is retained, then obviously, it's coordinated with the city manager's office, and we have the details on what those specific items are. In terms of professional services, we've included an allocation for video services, photography, communications, state of the city, different events, Veterans Day. You'll note that the video that we just created a few weeks ago from Memorial Day was funded out of the city manager's office. And so those are the types of activities that are included and centralized within the city manager's office. And then finally, printing and publications, costs related to newsletters, mailer costs for community engagement, a cost for the adoption program that includes trophies, plaques, those types of items that would be a part of those program, and then the community recognition program that is included within the strategic plan as well.
On the grants administration, the contracts, leases, rents, and taxes of $569,247, what does that entail?
So if you go to, let me go to the next page. The bulk of those costs are embedded with the special revenue funds, which is CDBG. And so the costs associated with that program, again, they just moved from finance into the city manager's office. So a lot of those are the contracts associated with the CDBG program. So when we look at the cost by funding source, you'll see that this department is primarily funded out of the general fund. There is some funding from special revenue funds, as I mentioned, from CDBG. And there is a portion of water fund that goes to offset the lease and salaries of personnel in the city manager's office. So the grand total of the city manager's office is just over $2 million for fiscal year 2122. So now, we've got the city clerk's office, and I believe John Paul is able to provide information on his operation for fiscal year 2122.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'll keep my budget short and sweet, because I have a small staff of just two. So in my budget presentation, I just wanted to highlight the new expenses that we even communicated through this new proposed budget. The three major costs that we were planning for the, one that you are already aware of, which is the special election. We had budgeted, or pre-budgeted $110,000, which we now know has changed from the RLB's estimate of $30,000. The other major change that we've made in previous years is we had a new staff that was previously approved for the deputy city clerk position. And the two asks that I provided tonight are one for records management, which includes records destruction for citywide records destruction day. So that would be self-working of different departments to maintain compliance as far as good record keeping. And then the second big ask would be public records act request program. This would help staff process public records requests at a much faster rate, have a system basically better to monitor all public records requests with different departments. The bonus in that would be having additional licenses with that program for PD to utilize. And so PD records management, their staff would be able to process records through that system as well. So that ask is about $10,000. So that's the two to two, the records management instruction project program is $10,000. So it's the new PRA program ask. So that, those are my new changes. We've gone, the administration staff, you'll see an increase for staffing costs because of the deputy city clerk position that was recently approved. Then again, the elections costs, which we proposed as $110,000, which was an overestimate. And then the records destruction, which is $10,000. So with that, that's my short presentation on the new revised budget for the city clerk's office. Here are your questions.
Any questions, anyone? All right, thank you. Doesn't mean we won't come back with questions later.
All right, so next up, we've got PD, and I think we've got Chief Pus, so I'll be able to provide a high-level overview of the fiscal year 2122 budget for PD.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So nice to meet you. It's been over a year. Can't believe it. It's been 26 years since I've started the academy, so time flies. Some instances, but it's been a long time. So this was a large undertaking, at least for me, but I'm goal-oriented, so having objectives that are metable, it's something to the fore, too, so we really enjoyed getting this together, although the timeframe was very short, but we made it happen. On the programs, I have 14 programs. I want to highlight just a couple, because I know that throughout the week, you're going to review the budget that probably have a ton of questions. And as we go through, the first one I would like to highlight or I'd like to touch on is so that generally, the total general fund, including Measure U, $8 million, is a total of $29,575,600, with a CFD of $462,200. So the total, as you look on page two when I get there, will be $29,375,600 for the total PD general fund, including Measure U. 14 programs that I have in front of you is administration. I'd like to highlight administration. We've added a public information social media officer. This will continue with our social media platform to enhance that, to expand our community engagements, and include website and work with the city staff to improve highlighting certain things on Measure U. We also have the KI program, dispatch, investigations, act, patrol, community services, professional standards, records management, ROCKS. I like to highlight ROCKS. The ROCKS team is adding a supervisor, which I'll explain down below. One supervisor, coupled by 20 part-time maintenance workers. They're called maintenance aides. This is to expand the ROCKS team to seven days a week. So we'll have them out there seven days a week. The maintenance workers will be an extension of our ROCKS team that will handle the graffiti, also handle abandoned property. They'll assist our swarm personnel, our large many items, which will relieve them to do actual police work and things that I want them out there to do. So, and this will be all, they will all be supervised by a ROCKS supervisor seven days a week. So that's a large enhancement. But we're going through four-day week that we used to shift throughout the week to seven-day stretch. So I'm pretty excited about that. Next is technology services program. We also have a traffic program. I want to highlight that, because that adds an additional traffic officer and a CSO to the traffic bureau. And we will expand that to seven days a week. So you'll see road officers out there seven days a week. So we're going to have to slow down on Fulton Avenue, St. Anderson, San Francisco. So I'm excited to get that going, and I think we'll see a big difference that perception a big difference, that perception, we'll see a lot of officers out on the street. When you look at the bottom of new expenses, that's the addition of a one community service officer that will go into the traffic bureau. Addition of one public information, social media officer that's assigned to administration that will work for every bureau in all the programs. Addition of one officer, that will be the traffic officer. Addition of one portable, which will expand that rocks team to seven days a week with full supervision. An addition of 20 part-time rocks maintenance workers. This is the breakdown. It's very difficult to see at this point, but it is in the budget. It's presented to you, which gives a better breakdown of our objectives, which we really took each program to parallel and to touch on the council's priorities, their strategic plans. So hopefully we'll see that. And I know when we come back now, I'm sure we'll have a couple of questions now, but I'm sure we'll get, we'll dive down deep next time around and we'll provide more. With that, I can answer any questions.
I do have a question for you, Chief. One of the areas under the community services, you've got maintained a strong expanding police department volunteer program. Will the three sub-stations that we used to have be opened again? The one on the east side, west side of the mall?
We are reevaluating that due to discussions with some of the owners of the property in one area. We once actually ran out their location, but we want to expand that, keep the actual, you know, we get the best work and the best engagement with the volunteers. It's easy for people that live on the west end, east end, north end, where they're able to visit those, make their reports or get any type of information. So we want to keep those open. But we're in talks right now with the city manager to do, where we could strategically place these substations.
Very good. It is a great program. I hear some people are in trouble all the time, but it was so convenient to go there. Not only that, when they were in those shopping malls and in the mall, that they felt the greater security, knowing that there was a PD substation. So yeah, try and keep that no matter what you do.
Yeah, our volunteers are great and they were hounded me to come back. So, you know, I gotta give that.
Okay, any other questions? Right, I'm sure we'll have you back. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. That was great.
Okay, next up, we've got the fire department. So Chief Phillips, in your crew.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Cameron Phillips. I'm your interim fire chief. I've been here for just a couple of months now. I'd like to interview Jimmy Marshak, he's our battalion chief that has been working diligently on our budget preparation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to present. I'm here to present the proposed budget for the fire department. Not too long ago, I was appointed the acting fire chief and city manager Chris Lopez very graciously introduced me and handed me the budget as my first my first ongoing duty as acting fire chief. So not too long after that, I got word that we were hiring an interim fire chief and I very graciously dumped the budget off to him. Not too long after he arrived, he very graciously pushed it right back on me. So here I am today to introduce the fire department budget. In the fire department, we've got five programs. We have our administration program, which includes the fire chief and administrative secretaries. We have fire prevention, emergency service, which is our emergency service coordinator, our fire and EMS operations, which is the bulk of our fire department, the boots on the ground. The people, the men and women that work hard and respond to calls to keep our citizens safe. And then we have dispatch as well that we share with PD. It's a combined dispatch center. We dispatch our PD and fire calls as well. So those are our programs in our fire department. For our proposed expenditures, our new expenditures, the one that everybody's kind of been waiting for to see if it's going to be in there, including us, is bringing engine five back to station five. It's kind of been a hallmark of the budget this year. The city manager, the finance director have worked really, really hard to find the money to bring this engine back to the citizens on the east side of the street. We're very happy as a fire department that we get to bring that level of coverage back to that end of the city and also add that to the rest of the protection in the city with our structured fire response. So that is the, the big mark for this budget is bringing engine five back. The second is a training center. We lack the ability to train due to not having the facility to do so. A lot of our training, we take place off of Stetson and Elk, the pole sack over there, which they're going to start to build. So we're going to move that area. And then we just find different buildings throughout the city. Business owners and different organizations are gracious to allow us to use their buildings to train. But we found it very important to start to develop our own facility. So we've allocated $400,000 for a training center, which will include the beginning of it, the structure itself, with some infrastructure needed to develop that training center. So it's a big, it's a big step. It's the firefighters and personnel of the fire department have been waiting a long time to have a training center. And we're happy to be able to start to provide that for them. We also have education equipment, which is two sets of education equipment to replace aging equipment on our engines. Those come in at cost of about $35,000 apiece. So they're very expensive. We allocated that this year. And then the last is a cleaning extractor for our PD. It's very important that we have proper cleaning equipment to clean our turnouts. And as we all know, structural fires and fires carry carcinogens, which then get into our protective equipment, transfer to our skin and make us very susceptible to cancer and other diseases. So we have one currently at station five and we're adding a second big shaft. And with that, that's the basics of our budget this year. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Right, any questions? Anyone?
I'd like to add just a couple of things there. Having Chief Pusco, Battalion Chief Myschak, you will know that there is one-time fund balance usage that is being utilized for the training center that BC Myschak talked about, as well as the overtime related to medic squad one. And so that's how we are funding those items, is the use, or clearly the use of fund balance. In particular, when it comes to medic squad one, we're not suggesting or recommending at this point that we add full-time FTEs to be on medic squad one because they'd only be able to cover a few shifts or a couple of shifts. And so we're recommending the use of overtime to fund that operation. We can stack up, we can stack down. And in the future subsequent time, we need to allocate more funding to it to provide more funding to it. We can do that and sort of bring it back to the council.
I have a question about that. How many days a week do you think every week? Or what are we, what are we planning?
BC Myschak, if you can knock the top of your head.
So currently we have $400,000 allocated in deep demand overtime monies. The deep demand, as you know, is what we constitute for medic one. $400,000 at this point will be as 3.5 days. It will stretch us throughout. Now, we can always increase that by more fund balance. And I believe there's some other options out there that we're looking at to increase that funding, to increase the usage of medic one, medicine.
And the reason I ask about this is because we've talked hard about not going backwards. We're still in the backwards phase of fire department with that. We'll argue about it on the Monday.
Well, I'd also just add a commentary to that. This really fundamentally goes back to 2016. And one of the challenges there was even though the voters approved measure U, there was no discussion about how the five and a half million dollar deficit, the five million dollar deficit in the general fund would be made up. So unfortunately, there's this dilemma that has occurred because there, there was a promise of elevated levels of service. But the fact of the matter is that in fiscal year 1516, when the budget was adopted, it did have that five million dollar deficit. So there is a bit of a challenge when it comes to getting back to that level because of the lack of ability to fund operations back in 1516. So we're, we're trying to slowly incrementally add those levels of service where we can without limiting our ability to fund other items in the future. So we are instilling some flexibility with the fire department's budget.
But for the record, in five, in medic one, we're taking away without council approval. And then we get to here, oh, we can bring it back. And then it doesn't come back because that was last March. And so if we eventually vote on this and it gets to come back July 1st, I'll be excited if it all gets to come back. But remember, that was all without a council vote. So all I hear is blah, blah, blah.
With all due respect, Mayor, the budget resolution does allow for the flexibility for that. The resolution time did allow for that. And so that's what gave management the opportunity to make those changes, Mayor.
I still don't agree. So anyways, are there any more questions for the fire department? All right, we will go on to the next one. Thank you.
So next up, we've got Public Works and I think we've got Lynn who's on Zoom that would be able to provide some context on this. And I believe he is going to work with Steve Lariso on this one as well. So anyone wants to lead, but jump on.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, city manager Lopez, this is Steve Lariso. I think Lynn may be having some challenges getting on. So if it's okay with you, I'll just go ahead and start with some of the items within the engineering portion of Public Works. And I hope everybody can hear me okay.
I'm clear.
Good, great. So the, of all the many programs that are within the Public Works component, the engineering side is focusing on four different, four different programs. The capital improvement, development, inspections and permit. The four that I wanted to, those are the four I wanted to focus on and give you some more, some background on that. So the first one we have is a development. And that one is for the development and, I'm sorry, the review and approval of plan checks that we have coming through the engineering department. We also are working with the community development department for the entitlement review on projects to get them basically moving and then into the engineering development, engineering review. The next one we have is the capital improvement. And as the council may recall, we brought forth the one-year CIP just a couple of months ago. And we are in the process right now of working with the other, the infrastructure commission and the planning commission to bring a two-year CIP. That hasn't been done since 2017, 2018. So we've got this two-year coming forward. And then with the next year, we're looking at having a a four-year. And then the following year will be a full five-year CIP program that'll incorporate all the different departments throughout the city. The next program within engineering is the permit section, permit program. And that's for encroachment and transportation permits in order to maintain a safe movement of vehicles and goods throughout the city. And the last one we have is the inspection section or program. The idea is to review, review developments to maintain a safe and attractive community. So the developments that we're reviewing or inspecting are both residential and commercial. And there's a lot going on right now that you are probably have been seeing, especially in the residential side of things. That's all that I have for the engineering side. If you'd like to, unless Lynn is on the phone right now, we can go to the next page for the budget, for the engineering budget items, if there's any discussion or questions there.
I think I am on the call now.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to Lynn.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I apologize. We were having a little technical difficulties there joining the meeting. The Public Works Department Engineering Department is absolutely excited to be able to support the strategic plan that the city has adopted, especially in the areas of quality of life and organizational effectiveness. As Steve mentioned, the engineering side is the capital improvement, development, inspections and permit side. And the rest of the operations are actually out in the field. So we have an administrative department that oversees all the programs within the Public Works Department. The assessment districts are actually funded from charges that are passed on to the property owners in the various districts that have been created over the last 20 years. And in the near future, you'll be seeing the annual engineers' reports coming forward to in the next two council meetings that will address the funding on that. Critical to the, the improvements within the community, park maintenance. We know that our parks have suffered from the budget shortfalls of the last year. And so we're very excited in the fact that we're going to be able to develop some programs that are going to increase the appearance of the community. That'll include the tree inventory and grid program in which the city has an estimated 20,000 street trees and park trees. And we will be developing through the budget, a inventory that will identify and more further address the types of trees. We already know we have the palm trees, but we will be working on developing a more enhanced inventory of those trees that are, that are in the community. And as part of that, then we can develop a grid trimming program in which based on the predominant species, we are then able to go through and, and conduct trimming on a more regular frequency. So instead of being in a call and response type of program, we are able to actually get out and proactively trim these trees. And as, that will definitely improve the appearance of the community. We're excited to be able to support the rocks program. We are working with the police department in developing a much more aggressive graffiti abatement approach that addresses both the public and private sides of the community. And we look forward to our continued support of that program. As, as you all know, illegal dumping, graffiti, weed abatement, all those kinds of functions certainly contribute to equality of life issues. And we, we are committed to improving, enhancing the community. As a matter of fact, one of the things that we did adopt was as we moved forward with the pavement rehabilitation program on Central Alessandro and Mayberry this year, we went out and actually conducted in cooperation with code enforcement and the police department, some quality of life enhancements, including tree trimming, identifying opportunities in the, with the private property owners to help them abate. And as it turned out, we coordinated that with our very first community-wide cleanup, which had over 170 vehicles, was able to get it, get that communicated. Storm drains, we've been able to switch over to Storm drains, we've been able to switch over to the, one of the parks, Mary Henley. We identified it as a dual function, we're able to do that. And so we are very excited. Again, we're budgeting for community quarterly cleanup events, our sidewalk inspection replacement program, tree inventory grid trimming program, water conservation landscape, which is going to help improve some of the water, the districts that are watered by city facilities, to help improve those appearances while helping to reduce water demand throughout the city. And with that, I'll conclude and take any questions with Steve and myself.
All right, do you have any questions on the Public Works section?
Lynn Russ Brown, thank you for that summary. Just a question. I really appreciate the proactive approach to the tree trimming because that's not only good for the health of the trees, but it also helps in a prevention program from the branches breaking or trees falling down when we have storm conditions. So from a risk management standpoint, that's really a good move. You may already be discussing this, but just a thought occurred to me when they're doing the tree trimming inventory, that would be a good opportunity to also be taking a look at our sidewalks because oftentimes the tree roots run hand in hand with damaged sidewalks, which is a risk management concern. So I think you could kind of dovetail those two things together at the same time, just a thought.
We appreciate that.
All right, anyone else on Public Works?
So next up, we've got the finance part.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm here to talk about the finance department. We do not have any new expenses. And our programs are administration in general, accounting payroll committee utility billing. Our programs serve the water customers within the city, which is about 9,600 connections. And the other programs within finance really help to serve all of the other departments so that they can do their jobs, whether it's making sure that our employees are getting paid, getting DOs out there, making sure that our finances are in order, that audits are being taken care of, that we're in compliance with any mandates that we have. So with that, our funding is split up. Most of it is split between general fund. And then special revenue funds is our storm drain fees. And water, so most of our, all our utility billing staff is charged to water and special revenue funds. And then we have a small amount that comes out of internal services funds. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Questions for finance? Thank you.
All right, so next we've got the library. Kathy's on her way up.
Wonderful to see you again. Well, thank you for being here, this is what I have to do. We have actually five different programs here in the library. There's our administration, our adult services, our child services, our support services, and our literacy services. Each of those have such very unique and different features that we really, I couldn't really break them out or combine them. We really have no new expenses coming. However, you'll notice that in the budget, our number is significantly higher than what it was last year. And that's because our software and maintenance fees have been moved from IT back to the library. So it looks like we have an increase in the budget. We kind of do, but it was there anyway, just in another department who was taking care of it. Thank you. So most of the library is general fund. The other funds that are used are development impact, which provides our materials and the Lissell endowment, which takes care of our supplies and a couple of our contracts. That is my presentation.
All right, questions for the library? Does your budget includes going back to being open full-time, basically Wednesday through Saturday?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That's coming.
Good question. Nice. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got community development. I think HP's on the line, so he'll be doing his presentation, I believe, remotely.
Great, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Before you tonight is a community development program. We have administration, building and safety, co-compliance, housing, and planning. I made some modifications to the slide, but I don't think it got updated. So I'll just go ahead and verbally update that for you. The new expense is the housing component that the community development will be inheriting. That has the $127,200 to staff operate and administer the housing programs. The building and safety, we're requesting one building tech due to the increase in number of single-family residential developments. Currently, we're looking at over 1,000 different units that will be developed. And we're also increasing the co-compliance, $60,000 for boardups and vacant property issues and concerns. We have these items programmed in. And if we go to the next slide. So you'll notice that the $60,000 for the code compliance is the one-time use. And the other two components that comes from a special revenue fund is for co-compliance and housing, both from CDBG funding. And planning is, I'm sorry, community development is. Can I answer any questions you may have?
Do you have questions? I have a question for you.
Yes.
Do you think that we need to add co-compliance officers?
It would help, but I do believe that city manager and the police department and finance has worked out where we can share a personnel from police department to help assist through that boardup and vacant property issues.
We get those complaints from that area in our city. And so that's why I asked you that. The other, if we are having a lot of businesses come to town, we have enough personnel to manage the load because we don't want people to get frustrated and leave.
Absolutely, and any help would alleviate and minimize the disruptions. But currently with three officers, they're doing amazing job. Last week, last weekend, they went out and they did a survey of the sidewalk vendor permits. Prior to that, prior week, they went out and talked to over 45 different vendors. And last week, they talked to three vendors on Friday, four on Saturday, and three on Sunday. So it dramatically reduced the amount of issues and concerns. And that was also due to the assistance from the police department. So it really does help when we organize and prepare forward and that we go out and notify the public, notify the vendors of what's coming through. And that same concept can be applied throughout the code enforcement programs.
Mayor, if I could add a couple of things. With respect to Measure U, there is one time use of Measure U fund balance for co-compliance boardups. Earlier this year, we actually ran out of money to do some of the work. And so we felt with $60,000 to help secure, whether it's a single-family residential house, would help alleviate PD and fire because then it doesn't become a magnet for illicit activity, doesn't become a magnet, or we minimizing the opportunity that it becomes a magnet for fires and those types of things. So that's really why we've included the use of fund balance for that. HP mentioned the work with respect to the rocks team. There's a civilian position that was added in the rocks program. And so in lieu of adding additional personnel in code enforcement or co-compliance, we're working out operationally how PD and community development can work together to achieve the same goal collectively without adding new personnel to community development. So I think there is a meeting that's scheduled for the next couple of weeks to see how that can happen on the go forward. One thing that building and safety does do is finding where we can staff up versus adding permanent staff. The last thing we want to do is bulk up the amount of staff that we have. And we all know the development is cyclical. We don't want to have a bunch of staff onboard and have to make reductions with it slow down. So there are instances where HP has been able to staff up on limited contract basis, recover the cost of having that individual there and really have those people plucked in as those projects come in. So that's really how we're looking at it on a demand-driven basis. So we don't add a lot of staff right now and then have to make some sort of reduction in the future.
My other question is, do we have a cost recovery program on those boardups?
So HP, do you, can you recall the system that we have in place for that?
Well, what we normally do is once we do the boardup is we would charge the property owner for those funds. And we're working with legal team to figure out exactly how to recover that fully. Right now, our recovery rate is not that great. So we're working with legal team to make sure that we have a full recovery.
HP, I have a follow-up on what Carly just brought up. Dealing with boardups, especially of foreclosed homes, do we recover costs from the banking institution that has foreclosed on the property owner?
Yes, generally on a banking institutions, we do recover. It's the individual property owners that we have difficulties. But on a banking institutions, we do recover.
And on the individual property owners that, for whatever reason, have we not looked at putting a lien on the property so that if and when it is sold, we can recover? Because I think we used to do that years ago.
Correct, we used to do a program called pendantsies, but that isn't really used for that method. So we're working legal to make sure that we have a program that is legal and to make sure that we have something that we can recover on individual property owners.
Mayor, I do have a meeting set up tomorrow with HP and Police Department Manager to tackle our next council to-do, future items, which is the code enforcement program. Cost recovery is agenda item number five. There are a couple, there are a lot of different methods that we're looking at. The two primary ones are, as you mentioned, the leads, or authorized interstate law. And honestly, putting down the process for making that just a regular part of the code enforcement process so that, you know, your recovery rate goes from, as far as now, it's a little more at law, to be part of the program. The other way we're going to be looking at it is actually through the special assessment process. So the lead process, as you know, is the lead on the property. Typically, you recover when the property is sold, so they can clear the title. Special assessment, on the other hand, allows the city to collect the cost of enforcement on the property tax rolls on a annual basis, which generally leads to recovery sooner. There are pros and cons to both methods, so we'll be going over those with city staff.
Excellent, thank you. We have another question for us.
Yes, HP, the city manager and I have had some conversations about this in the past. And I just want to throw this thought out there again. Hopefully, the thought might germinate a little bit. But I think, I agree with the mayor's comment that code enforcement or the lack thereof is one of the things we hear most about. And just a suggestion, because I know that there are substantially more violations than we have personnel to follow up on. And I'm just thinking that it might be beneficial use of our volunteers, particularly the police volunteers, not to do the inspections, but just do follow-up drive-bys, if you will. Because you might have an open case and the code enforcement officer may not be able to get around to see if there's been compliance. And if a list of violations and timelines for some corrective action could be provided to the volunteers, they could do a spot check. And if they just are told what to look for, it either has been done or it hasn't been done. And they just provide a brief report back to code compliance. So it might shortcut some of their work. And certainly, the volunteers would appreciate having something meaningful to do as a way of a task. So just, please give that some more thought. I know that you've got volunteers that would love to do that.
So if I could just provide a little bit of context, because I know that Stephen's team, HP's team, have been involved. Stephen, some conversations with PD is we're really taking a strategic approach to doing code compliance. And so part of that becomes having the tools available that Stephen can articulate to the team to know, okay, this is what we can do in this instance. This is what we do in that instance. So the team understands what can be done versus kind of throwing everything on the wall and then seeing what sticks. And then everybody's unhappy because it's the same issue that comes up. So part of what we're looking at is being strategic and how we deploy our assets and the types of things that they're focusing in on versus a shotgun approach. And so that's some of the conversations we're having now. I think that's a great suggestion. And I think part of what we're trying to do now is understand, okay, what are the tools and the tool belt? How are we currently deploying our resources? And let's see if we can start directing them in a different manner to get the outcomes that you and I both want, but then also the rest of the community wants too. So we're kind of picking it apart from how it is now and seeing if we can move the needle a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay, next department.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got HR to provide the HR question now.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and councilmembers. So I'm going to be, going to be reviewing the human resources division budget. So for the programs, we have employee appreciation, which will be new for our division. And many studies have shown that recognition increases morale, motivation, productivity, retention, and engagement. And as you know, we have an issue with retention. So we are very hopeful that this will improve our retention with that. So with the other programs that we have, we have employee services. And that pretty much all encompasses benefits administration for both retirees and active employees. We have leagues of absence administration, classification and compensation, talent acquisition or recruitment, workers' compensation administration, and employee and legal relations. And then we finally have reliability and insurance claims. So the only new expense that we do have will be the employee appreciation, which we are asking for $25,000 so we can provide employee appreciation and recognition events for our employees. And another new expense that, not listed here, but city manager mentioned it earlier, is the addition of a human resources analyst to provide assistance, especially with the fire police department. And our funding basically finally comes from general fund, partial for Measure U, or that HR analyst position, and then from the internal services.
Questions? Excellent, thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment, I really appreciate the emphasis on the employee appreciation. Just a comment, I really appreciate the emphasis on the employee appreciation. It just is one of those things that is so often overlooked. And it just, the acknowledgement of the employees goes a real long ways towards motivation. In my former municipal staff life, the city I worked for actually had a committee that they called Employee Development Advisory Committee. And, and it was an ad hoc committee with representatives from the respective departments. And they came up with some really good ideas of ways of acknowledging anniversary dates organizing employee pickets and those types of things. It seemed to be a very much appreciated program, so I'm glad to see this.
Yes, and also what's important to note is that many recognition is not even monetary, so we could do a lot, even if it's not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and we're getting to the tail end of these items, so I think we've just got IT. And then one section on non-departmental, the finances to lead on, but go ahead, Scott.
Hello, Scott, I'm with information technology. IT comprises a board from programs, administration, applications, government TV, and systems. Administration is the oversight of all of these programs, as well as it reviews technology purchases, managed software contracts, licensing. And also there's applications, is just what it sounds like. It covers software-based systems that we have. Larger enterprise softwares, Microsoft, S3 for GIS systems. Anything like that, document imaging. Government TV is the, obviously, is the oversight of the channel three on spectrum, we channel thirty-eight frontier. The systems portion or program actually covers our hardware-based systems, those are the phone servers that are being desktops and laptops. So for new expenses within those programs, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred for geographic information system assistance. For application software maintenance, increase of one thousand three hundred to cover antivirus software licensing. And we also have a fifty-five thousand one hundred dollar increase for telephone system maintenance. Budget-wise, just to kind of review that real quick, there is quite a bit of difference to last year's budget and my a lot of that has to do with that software maintenance budget that we have. Putting those softwares for departments within those programs for So a lot of those things were paid for, if you looked at previous budgets, they had little parentheses around it, specifically for PD or for fire or library. And with those, they're actually now inside those programs for those departments rather than inside the IT channel. Any questions?
Thank you, Scott. On the, the PEG fees, it, I realize it's, it's limited to capital expenses, but if there's equipment that needs to be purchased, say for the the, the public information's social media type position and or a PR firm to be hired to, to get the good word out about him, so we could put it on the government channel. Could those expenditures be considered capital expenses and taken out of the PEG funds? Not, not for the people and not for the actual program, but for the equipment that would be necessary to utilize channel three.
If there is an equipment purchase, a capital purchase that has kind of an excess towards that system, I'm sure probably through that, it's in the city's office.
I would argue that any type of PR and good news and factual information on what is happening in the city would be considered government education and information. I mean, that, it's natural to me, I hope legal will agree with me.
Not quite. So, so what I can tell you is the use of PEG fees is subject to both federal and state regulations. There is state-level precedent that suggests, it does not come out and just say it, that'd be too easy, that we're required to use it for capital costs. Part of the language of that opinion is also inconsistent with federal guidance. So I, I, I think there is a little bit of room here for us to talk. I mean, there, there are certain things that are clearly inappropriate, there are certain things that clearly meet the definition. But I'm certainly happy to meet the staff to try to be creative in how we employ this.
And the last item is non-departmental, so I think Lauren will be giving this one. And this will conclude all of the operations for this year twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Okay, so items listed under non-departmental are just that, you have related items to a specific department. So that's the contract for animal regulation. There is a small amount of twenty-two thousand dollars for non-departmental, and what that is, is funding set aside for appraisals of city properties that we may have to do so in the near future. The next one is a hardline refunding bond, this is a CFD for the hardline development. It is fully funded through tax increment. The tax increment comes in and city staff make sure that the bank receives their principal and interest payments. I believe they're quarterly. We also have the human project area two thousand fourteen refunding bond. Now, what this is, is a combination of two old RDA bonds that were refinanced into two thousand fourteen. So the funding from that comes from taxes from the RDA dissolution to pay for the bond. And then the next line that you see for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it says RDA retirement obligation, is the admin funds that they provide the city to manage not just the payments of, of the bonds, but also administering anything to do with bringing it over to council with the consultant that assists with preparing the retirement obligation plans. And that is all we have. So none of those are really, except for animal regulations, they're not really savings.
All right, excellent. Any questions, anyone? So, at this point, is that all you have, city manager, as far as presentations?
Yes, Mayor, that's it.
Okay. So, at this point, I mean, unless you have further discussions or questions, I suggest that just you individually just keep going through it, you know, look at the things, compare things that you want to compare. Have your meeting with Chris to speak, so that you can ask him more questions, so that we're prepared for the next meeting to talk about it again. And I don't know that we'll necessarily need department heads to come up, but we can be more specific with our questions if we have them for Chris. Is that fine with you?
Mayor, I've got a list of questions here that we'll make sure that we go in depth at the next meeting. Just as a summary, I've got the IT internal service charges, facilities, those items. The election cost that was noted earlier, we probably need to refine that. We'll have some more follow-up as it relates to maybe some opportunities on the PEG side to put some expenditures there. And then some minor just tweaks to, you know, phrasing that we'll make to the budget from now until the next conference.
Everybody doesn't need a microphone, but on public works parks, there's a couple typos in that the total number of acreage is not in, has one parentheses, but not the other, and it's totally not trolling. Yeah, sorry about that. All right, I think this was a great session. Thank you, staff. Thank you all of you, and for all the work that you guys have done. I think this was, I mean, believe it or not, this is pages, this is three hundred pages that they went through tonight. And so if you look up the backup documents that are online, it was real easy to go through. I think this is very understandable for everyone, so it's a big difference. Adding on to that, I, this, this budget presentation is the best one I think I've ever seen, and it, it does bring into context all of the programs that the different departments actually do, instead of just saying, here's, here's the department, and here's our budget, and this is our salaries, these are, you know, business expenses and whatever else down the line. It's, it's a chance that everyone, including council, sees exactly what goes on. And there's a, a cost analysis that goes with it. So if you say, how much do our motor officers cost for traffic? We know, how much does a canine program cost? We know, is it cost beneficial, and you can actually do the comparison. So this, this was, this was a great idea. Good work, and I know, I know staff put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this one, because I talked to quite a few and said, we've never done this before. But you know, it's really good with the end process, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and I agree with Lex's comments on that. And anytime you're transitioning from a previous way of doing things to a newer, different way of doing that, it's always going to be more labor-intensive, but believe me, that this is, this is the way a budget should be presented. And I think we've got this template now, so come next year, it'll be much, much easier and much less labor-intensive, so all of the blood, sweat, and tears will be worth it.
All right, anyone else?
Mayor, if I could just add a couple of things. I also want to thank John Paul. I know Friday, we were getting this, everything sorted away, and how many iterations we did. I want to thank John Paul, really, I can't thank the entire executive team, Chief Cruz, Kathy, HP, Loretta, Chief Phillips, BC Myshock. Everybody was really, you know, Erica, you know, just prioritize this. I can't thank them enough for everything that they did. And then finally, want to thank the council, because this really is all born out of conversations that the council hosted back in January and February. So for not for those conversations back then, I don't think that you would have seen everything that you saw tonight. So I just want to thank the council for taking this up. I know it's something that you all have talked about before, so I just want to give my thanks and my appreciation for really leading this discussion and getting us to this point, so thank you, Mayor.
And thank you too, Chris, for leaving all this. All right, with that, our meeting is adjourned.